We have a fire president, uh, Chasson to discuss the right of we the Terrible Fire Consolidation Water District. And we want to ask Archie to come by to the meeting. Appreciate you coming, Archie. Archie, you want to kind of explain? We didn't have some questions, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. And look, if you guys have any questions, we'll go and do this after. So this kind of started a year ago. Terrible on the water plant, Shreve River water plant, South Ho. The South Ho land has a tremendous money issue with flooding in the water. If they draw their water from their wells, it's forced over the main. It's about ninety percent of the terrible water. About the amount of seven or fifty, if that's what it would be, um, if they could do here at San Juan or all that fun stuff, the condition of that, that led everything in, um, is sent back through. So we're working through a lot of the macro value there, one, the director, uh, if they cut them down. We're still probably a year and a half away from anything really happening. This is kind of the first step in their, their plan to expand their water plant. Uh, so there's nothing that's going to happen tomorrow, there's nothing that's going to happen, uh, in the next six months. So we have to, um, just, just, um, yeah. With that, I'll give you a quick.
Do you got any question?
I think the water plant is terrible, you're telling me.
Uh, so if you're on highway, want to go into Tibidoo, uh, you can take the little bar bike back road, right forward to Blue Creek Rock. Uh, you follow that, basically all the way to the Terrible Water Pond, it's situated on the pond.
So they take that and the father and the brother and the group?
Yep. So they draw their water from Violet's route now, looking up Little Moreton now, uh, probably, I guess it's in, oh, so probably twenty fifteen inch. Uh, the state amended the law, so essentially the son from the boot picked up the Violet's route right forward. The guys who drove up there to Johnsonville, they draw the water from the river and pump it in the body and they kind of maintain the body of, um, and go forward. They don't really do a lot down here to support, to do the great job and take care of that, provide, um, cleaning sandstorm. Um, but several years ago, Terrible was mad at that, because they were starting to draw more and more water off the pond. Uh, so the freshwater districts mainly custody of the water plants. And there's some other people as a side form of Johnsonville, some where they're calling it, um, the water, but they're drawing it and stuff like that. The freshwater district doesn't control that.
What they expect, what they expect?
You would. It's not going to change our treatment, it means we're not going to have to treat our water any different, um, nothing like that. It's literally, we're just getting the ability to be, uh, the right way that we're going.
Why they never did it before?
So the last, I think that, that water plant was built in nineteen seventy-four. Uh, so from seventy-four even to date, they could recirculate that water. Look at that big sediment pit. If you look at their water plant from Google Earth, you can actually see the sediment, they're all in their, in their plant.
So why they can't do that anymore?
Because their, their plant's going to end up, if they expand it, they will have another, they want to.
I know the people is concerned of what I've seen in the face of it, but what might be in it. I know you're saying nothing in it, but where's the proof? I know you say you have something on the phone, but can, can regular people go see? Maybe when they do the testing, they did nothing in it, you know? To ease their mind?
Yeah. And, and look, it's, yeah, and, and it's, look, that we, and my whole, my whole kind of premise, uh, and what our folks, folks at the council, everybody who reached out is that, you know, we'd, we'd never ask assumption, essentially, the city of Tibidoo, our water plant was providing any of this, right? But now, all of a sudden, because it's, it's a different parish where it's shared, um, and then, when it's made to be out, the way it was made to be out on, on Cooker Media, uh, which I think is going to be the death of this country. Uh, it, it gives people scare, right? Because people use the words toxic sludge. We all get nervous, right?
Well, when you put something in your body, it's, it's people concerned.
But I did, you know, I worked with Tibidoo for four years, and look at the, the water plant, you can lock for them, I could have done five million gallons of water back in the month. Five million gallons of water. We didn't have to put together, right? Now, whether or not people know it happens, you know, up until last week, I mentioned, I guess, nobody knew it happened, right?
I'm sure, I'm sure they gotta use chemicals to treat the water. I mean, that water comes from the Mississippi River, God knows what's in that.
Right. And I get, I get more worried about how the water plants that drink into the body, but why I get worried about this one lot of people. But look, yeah, you put, you put powder in the water when you first get it to make the sediment fall out, uh, and once you treat it, that first go around, that's when you're adding your.
That's what I think the people don't realize, what it takes to take water out of the body and treat it to make it drinkable. There's a lot, there's a lot in it.
And every time it rains, it starts up the bottom of the body and if you get, if you get more flooded, it changes the way you treat water. Look, I got, I got a very fresh portion of this stuff, and I was working with the city of Tibidoo, but I had no clue on it before. And when you got assigned that permit at the end of the day, it said you're testing it and you're treating it the right way, you learn pretty quick that I go to the open.
Better than, no, no present Violet's route should go again?
They all, the freshwater district has looked at it, and they're good with it. Our water plant gave us a couple of questions to make sure with Terrible, we can do a word about, you know, are they going to discharge everything in their pit? Basically flush everything out of their body, which they're not. Uh, it's just going to do that, that popular water, that every part of the pond out. So we're working through a couple of questions that we can.
So it's not going to affect the height?
I will say, probably, I think the new pump station Johnsonville says, um, it's not, um, it's six.
Got rid of the weir.
They did the weir from out of your land.
They did that a long time ago. That's what, that's what built it.
It's not, it's not fresh, this, we, we, uh, sediment that goes down from the Mississippi River, so they said they do conversion to irrigate the bill way. After you got this, this sediment settled down, are y'all taking that any sort of way and using it to build, uh, water records in the funnel? Can we? Is there a reason it ain't personal enough?
It's really not enough. I mean, in thirty years of that water plant, they're only running, they're probably not doing anything. So it's not a huge amount of water. Because again, you're not, if you look at the water plant, water plant, they're set off the box, you suck it from the middle of the water column, most places where you get, you, most people realize the lockwork every year that we build saltwater. Um, it closes if you got a saltwater tube. If you suck out the middle part of the water column, you don't get a saltwater, so you don't get all that sediment. So what you pull out is not a whole heck of a lot. It's a wide.
I like that thing, the rest of the nation.
Can it go into the water?
Use it if you, use it if you can.
Sludge would be basically ninety, ninety-five percent mud.
If they're, if they're.
Yeah, it's like the bottom of the filter or the fuel filter itself, but it's, it's more.
All right. Anybody else has any question? Well, Archie? Archie, appreciate you. Appreciate you coming on.
At least guess I want to be there this morning.
Okay.
We definitely go. Yeah, obviously, yeah.
All right. I want to thank you for coming. I mean, we got a long meeting. If you need to leave, you know, we understand.
I got a few things I'll hold. I have to pick up my daughter from Dan's.
All right. Thank you.
That's good.
All right. The merit to provide update on the Christmas lights. Uh, as you know, this year, the lights are going up, uh, on the light poles. And, uh, the reason that they haven't been put up since Hurricane Ida is when Hurricane Ida came, all the poles were down. We asked Energy to come put some more, so we had meetings with Energy, meetings with Energy. They wanted us to put a weather head on each Christmas light, you know, on the pole, a weather head. Little fuel box, little plug in. And that costs us money, so, um, going back and forth, uh, Energy donated ten thousand dollars for us to buy, buy the materials in the town, through the labor field. Uh, we have twenty-nine of them put up for this year. It won't be as cool as, you know, we spread it out throughout the town. So next year, we hope to do another twenty-nine or thirty and get another grant from, from Energy. All the Christmas lights I see out there is all donated money from people in the community, business, community, so, and other taxpayers paid for all the Christmas lights. Been very lucky in the last forty years, you know, we've been working Christmas lights, we've purchased them. But I just want to give a little history, then FEMA gave us about thirty thousand dollars. Our Christmas tree got damaged, uh, riverboat got damaged, and few on the river, probably the river got damaged, so FEMA reimbursed us thirty thousand dollars, you know, some damage, like, it took this, this long to get it back up, you know, to, up to what Energy's standing. But now, that, we don't need Energy, after, after they're up, we can do it ourselves, put the, put the break on and put the life. I just wanted to share that with you, and I want to thank the group for really, they put a lot of work into it. Uh, Energy probably put ten thousand dollars for the material, the town probably got fifteen thousand dollars worth of labor, you know what I'm saying? So it doesn't come out, it doesn't come without a cost, so I just wanted to share that with you. If you got any questions, I can answer it, and that would be all. Building permits, we don't have any. Occupation licenses, we don't have any. Project status report, Mr. Plizzons didn't attend the meeting tonight, but he, he missed the agenda. I'd like to add funding for phase nine sewage to the agenda. If I can request it, move by Mike. Say goodbye Kip, audience once, audience twice, audience three times. Jody, hi, Kip, Willis, Lacy, Mike. It is an opportunity to apply for, uh, let's see, two point one million dollar grant for phase nine that would cover Washington Street and Bergen Street. And I guess I'm asking the council, the town has to come up with twenty-five percent. At twenty-five percent, it would be five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. My recommendation is go ahead and apply for it. We get it, then we decide, we, we're going to move forward with it. So I'm asking the council to hold on it, rise this evening. Thought I might have missed something. When you raise your head like that, you get signed. So if you, you know, if you got any, if you got any question, I'd be free to answer, you know what I'm saying? So, but if not, uh, if y'all want to move forward with it, I need a, need a motion.
Move and move all the way.
Move by Mike, second by Lacy. All right. No further questions. Uh, Jody?
Hi.
Kip?
Hi.
Willis?
Hi.
Lacy?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Nice having it. I recommend, uh, defer all the projects, uh, Mr. Plizzons to the next meeting. Move by Willis, second by Lacy. No further questions. Jody?
Hi.
Kip?
Hi.
Willis?
Hi.
Lacy?
Mike?
Hi.
Nice having it. Attention report, Mr. Oden.
Okay, uh, also vehicle legislation, I did speak with President Oden, um, I think he has been very busy in that session.
...engineered by Lucas Villalobos. And it's out there next year. It's in the land of several roads. There's problems back in that area. However, they did say one of them. They felt that they could take care of in the meantime. Again, you told me you would let me know which one it was. I don't know.
Uh huh. On this, Duce Drive. Somebody's gonna get killed there. You know how flipping over? There's a rock like this. My granddaughter lives there. I found that yesterday. You get a little bit up there, that somebody's gonna flip over. I mean, we just can't wait. We've been waiting for that for about two years now.
At least.
I can send, I can send the crew. Put some, some rocks there tomorrow.
I mean, it's dangerous.
Is that a?
And somebody coming from down the bar will turn in there not used to that street there. They don't understand.
We'll put some rocks. We have some rocks here.
There's gotta be at least a two foot drop.
You just? You see something like this, hit the office and do it and notify them. We'll get it done right away. Uh, Mark?
Hard question, someone. Y'all gonna be blocked out in your rooms between novel and the end of this year?
Yeah, so those, those is the groups working on. Been meeting a couple of times. We had it. The children have been. They just were right. They're just before.
Alright, thank you. Alright Bryce, thank you for the update next.
Uh, next item was, uh, possibility of moving the American Legion monument located at the old Old Medal American Legion Hall. Um, I did look into this a little bit. Talked to the mayor of how now you own the property now. Um, the next thing to do would be to, I need to research if the town can do this. Uh, without, if the town doesn't have the authority to do this, we would need a participative governance decision. Um, since they do have the authority to do something like this, that would be, we will build a governmental agreement. That would basically allow us to remove, um, one of the parts of the monument. Put it before, whatever the hell. So, um, I guess it's for council discussion if you wanna talk about more, wanna look into it further. Uh, like Mr. Willis said, this is a big monument. Um, I'm not sure how we would move it. There's a way into it.
Anything can be moved.
Anyway, that's, that's where I'm at now. Um, it, it's the will of the council to move it.
You know, Willis gonna hit on his hand and get approval for us to move it.
We have a meeting next Monday.
We definitely wanna work with them, you know what I'm saying?
Now, the people, people are talking to him. If there's any idea of where it's gonna be for him before. So that's what we're discussing. Of course, a lot of it, uh, it's, it's, I got two, you know, if you go look at it, it's cracked. All the name, not exactly. And I went there the other day again, I looked at it, it was all around to the backside. It's done, you know, glued to it or whatever. I, I just hope it doesn't, it doesn't break.
As far as the location, we can have a legionary new, uh, park commission and see where it can put it. Where, you know, we wanna put it along the road somewhere in the park to where people can notice it.
I said, that was a, that was a, it's one of our top stars. And if there's already one, one movement forward, or we're gonna have to take that, the falls or whatever. If there was something else on top of that, but that's not my job. Fifteen years ago. I've had a hard time. Could be tough, everything would, better go to the neighbors, the objects. The, the, the machine we need to pay, to pick it up with.
You know, after looking at it, I went to a couple of contractors, we picked, picked up the whole thing, you know, put some pad eyes under four corners and make a saddle, pick it up straight, you know, I think you could save it, you know?
What's the alternative, leave it there?
Well, the, the idea is to sort of property, correct?
What do you mean? You have to move it probably into it? Or they're gonna tear it down?
No, no, we're gonna try to save it, put it at the park.
But say if, if we can't, you know, for some reason you wouldn't be able to?
Well, that's why we wanna, I don't wanna do just a town. I wanna be in partnership with the American Legion in doing it, you know what I think? I mean, if they say give us a chance to move it, we'll move it.
Yeah, I'm all for moving it.
If they don't want, well, we won't.
Keep it in town, keep it in town.
I mean, right, right there, I just noticed, I went on a complaint the other day. I just noticed it there and I just felt it'd be good and in a better place. And I think everybody. But if you want, yeah.
I thought we are ready, uh, uh, for the can move forward.
Right, the legal part, the legal part. No, no, let it do its legal part.
They stay with the American Legion, like the half yellow meeting. They're fine with it. Then it, it's a good move forward.
I'm with, I'm good. I just got a lawyer right there. You gotta, sometimes you, you don't think like a.
Sometimes he don't.
But thank you Bryce. If we work together Willis on that and see.
Let me know when I have a meeting with you.
Alright, thank you Bryce, Willis.
Yeah, the last item, when we, on the non-report was research options, uh, of property located at twenty six to six hundred Alex, they're going to the bar. Um, I think that was, it was raised, uh, that we had a potential, um, you know, public nuisance issue over there. I guess the, the first question I had, I just, I heard several lines, uh, in that area, part of that property is in town or other than town. So that would be the first thing that we would need to figure out exactly what. Speaking with John, I don't know if you mentioned that so. I'll look back to where the, the line is before in town or outside. But once, once that's, um, you know, figured out, the last time we looked into this issue, as I mentioned in the last meeting, we had not had, uh, the provision in our ordinance that allowed for building a fence around what we call the timber. Uh, so the first thing that we would need to, you know, decide is whether or not we deal with these stores there or what we call junk items in our ordinance, which is basically, uh, inoperable or unusable. Electrical appliances and machinery and equipment. Or lumber, timber, construction debris, et cetera, that's placed in a fashion that can spread or harbor disease, emit unpleasant odors or harmful gas or attract rodents or other disease parrots. So once, if we're able to, you know, make that determination, the next thing would be to, um, send them a notice, uh, base, which would include either building a fence around it or moving the property.
Alright, if you don't mind getting with John, telling you, seeing an air photo of the property that aren't very possible. I guess that's what you need, right?
Correct, correct. In the meantime, it would just be to, uh, to bring that to council. If we deal that in violation of that ordinance, maybe, uh, move to a meeting and then opportunity to, like we've done numerous times.
Well, I spoke to Don a couple of times. I met, met with him in the property society. He'd ask if he needed to come to meet tonight. I told him, I don't think it's necessary to actually state, you know, what you want before we, you know, things. But he definitely need to identify what's in town or not in town before you decide. Okay, that's it? Oh, Mr. John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, that number one, off, off, off of the vehicles. We're talking golf carts, we're talking four wheelers, three wheelers?
All of them.
We're talking about, talking, I don't know, but you just can put a four wheeler that's a little thirty, forty miles an hour. You know, you're gonna get a, you have to get him a seat to drive him fast. You're talking just golf carts like both right now?
So this would, this would be a top speed of twenty five miles an hour. Something that has a top speed of twenty five miles an hour. I just prepared.
You good?
Good.
Alright, son. Okay, Chief of Police, thank you Bryce.
One update on twenty twenty three Chevy Tahoe collision. It's that car that was seen as a.
Uh, question on this. So again, that is no warrant, you know, that you want me to slap?
Missed no warrant, keep about four hundred miles. I checked with Golden, they went on our warrant.
Got you. Uh, so exactly, I mean, I heard y'all kinda drove it there. So what, valve train issues, stop taking, or you don't do it?
Um, I don't know. Kind of, you know, it drove rough, quick to go fast. Sometimes it'll stop and go to the park.
Alright, uh.
I didn't. Normally, if it's out of warranty, I was saying.
Yeah, I was kinda, I agree with that as quick as, because gotta why units missing and missing a key piece of, uh, a key tool, I guess, would be the proper way to put it for that.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, we move forward. Next, full business. Hurricane Auto Repair Department project have been obligated to receive funding with work to completed deadline November thirty two thousand twenty four. So pumping, the pump behind Louisville and floodgate at the park, big electrical box at the pumping station. Street signs completed and waiting on parking sign. Lift station and storage plants. Some of this work has been done, but since there's more than one project on a, on a, on a project, you can't close it, you know what I'm saying? Huh? No, yeah.
You were supposed to be, you were supposed to be here last week and nothing worked out, but you.
You're here today working. Senior citizen in the crab building, fifty percent rule request. Call all, call on eleven, twelve, twenty four was advised that it will be January twenty fifth before the CRC gets to this project because of backlog. Swimming pool, swimming pool pump, uh, pump building, swimming pool bathhouse for a possible alternate project. Called on eleven, twelve, twenty four was advised it will be January twenty fifth before the CRC gets this project because of the backlog. Project requi-, uh, fire, the request biz for first quarter two thousand twenty five to repair asphalt Ridgewood, Duce Drive and Norman Street. Remind me that, uh, we talked to Sal about taking care of Duce. Yes, sir.
He said he talked to the guy and he said he had two streets, but he won't give it in anybody?
No, he's gonna, he'll let me know. He just, uh, when I asked him today, he didn't know that too often.
If we can really talk by odds, I mean, they all bad, but you see.
Yeah. Even the road sale factor. Just a damn drain that's running. Right. Okay, LGAP application submitted on eleven thirteen two thousand two hundred and three approved the thirty five thousand, the council award. The skateboard parking lot, parking lot with handicap parking. On the eleventh twenty five, twenty four, construction was completed and waiting on handicap parking. Did a great job on that parking lot, that contractor. I mean, there's a, it really brings out the plate right there. And also, they can use the parking for that, that, uh, workout area also. Counselor? Soon as we finish the Christmas lights. I mean, it would've been done by now, but you got a lot of time in the Christmas lights, so. No problem. Council Chairman, if they estimate and provide criteria for speed bumps in Washington Street, Jeremy Lane and Duce Street.
Yes, sir. So I'm going to, I'm sure y'all got the email from Jared, huh? Bryce, you wanna explain like you did to me a while ago, what the ordinance is gonna, how it's gonna read, what it's gonna? You took the parish's criteria and downsized it a little bit.
Alright, so it's in, we, uh, Jared looked at the parish's criteria. Then she drafted this, uh, something to y'all review. Um, we tried to simplify it, but the, the gist of it is you would need sixty five percent of the residents on the street petition, uh, to bring it to the board of council. And in response to that, the council would put together a committee that includes two council members and basically the person who brought the request and somebody else from that street. Uh, they would need to look into, um, basically the proposal of how much it would cost, uh, what to put on the street for the traffic calming device. Uh, and within a certain amount of time, they would come back to the council and provide a report and would ultimately get to the council. So it's in, we have to count the other comparison. But, uh, a little bit of a debate and, uh, forward if that one's moved.
Alright, we'll just pull up the next meeting. Jody, go with that again. Alright, everybody review and have any question? Mr. Johnny?
How many times do we have to stand that position, that petition and a hundred percent of people on the street signed it? If I do it again, that's the third time.
Well, this would be the first time the council will have their own procedure to do it.
It's alright, it's a clutter right now, look like it's.
We, we was always picking back and on the, on the parish's criteria, Mr. Johnny.
Okay.
We was always picking back and on the parish's criteria, which was high.
And right now, we don't have our own ordinance.
So we, we down, downsizing the criteria, if you will, to make it a little easier? I guess that's a good word to say. I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying.
And, okay, you good? Okay, energy.
You're not gonna give up. I'm not gonna give up.
Energy trim trees around light poles submitted request to Fogel, Garette and Report Ridge Streets.
Now, this is an update today of, uh, when we did this, when we turned the meeting, we did, and we was glad we could be submitted to get proper chain right now.
Hurricane Francine project has been cre- uh, created. They filed a cat B claim for forced account labor and material. I said last meeting, this town, uh, had to expense a fifty five thousand dollars just to prepare for the storm, so this, this sure had to go. Update from the assesses office and avigory tax inventory tax that could be cut from the tax rule if legislative passes. The LGAP application is two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five, on the eleventh twenty seven, twenty four. Application submitted by sidewalk repair between Duce Street and Purge. Okay. Combination of procedures, essential planning, Tom, that's already over.
First one, BC ten twenty nine. This property is condemned demolition bid to the state and our CBO has updated. This was a follow-up inspection. No changes have been made since previous inspection, so my recommendation would be to proceed with the final.
Okay, uh, we had bid, went out for bids for that building, so I have two envelopes there. Both sealed. I got one. They don't give me a sharp one, though.
You want me to talk to?
Uh huh. Okay, Dan.
They got some sheriff in there, watch out.
This was Kim Su. Probably using envelope. Nopley Lane. Castaic Construction Company. Eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Demolishing the building and all the office material could be improved by parasite. Should be parasite, but that's fine. Two bid, uh, BC ten twenty nine, attention Tracy, DJALLC. BM Construction, is that you, Ben? Three thousand eight hundred dollars. Three thousand eight hundred dollars. You didn't miss no zeros, I'm saxon. That's fine, good, good. Alright, but counsel, what's the wish of the counsel?
I'm over, we take a load of it.
Is the motion made?
The other one, you read them, quit the paperwork. You just made it right.
The, the, tear it down and haul. Demolish the material, uh, I heard you want. Demolish the metal and building and remove all the. Okay, who made the motion, I'm sorry. Motion made by Kip, second by Willis. Any further questions? No further question, we'll move, we'll go ahead and put on it. Jody. Alright, Kip. Alright, Willis. Lacy. Mike.
Aye.
Alright, that's it. Okay, Tom?
Alright, uh, BC ten forty eight, this property is condemned. Demolition has been ordered to serve with a notice of demolition that's not been able to be made. Uh, our CBO does have an up, uh, an update, however, on the property. This was a follow-up inspection. All items from the initial funding change inspection have been rejected.
Alright. We'll pick it up, did we? Motion made by Mike to move the agenda. Second by Jody. No further, any other questions? No further question, we're going to Jody. Kip. Willis. Lacy. Mike.
Aye.
Thank you.
BC ten fifty. This property has been condemned. Uh, the owner hasn't filled this date to remove demolition decree. Our CBO has. This was a follow-up inspection. Willings to remove demolish the building.
Okay, I spoke to the Revstock, uh, family this afternoon. They came in and, uh, they're asking for extension Thursday. They will clean it up, but he had, he was supposed to be here tonight, but he has a proceed, medical procedure. He had to be back on the floor during the morning. So I feel my reason to give. I request the council Thursday.
I'm over that.
Move by Kip.
Second.
Second by Jody. Any other questions? No further question, we're going to Jody. Kip. Uh, Willis. Lacy. Mike.
Aye.
Alright.
We did, uh, kind of fit. We went and looked at it, but that, they got them, them slate that possibly at best. Possibly something with it, so we, we decided not to do it.
Okay, um, next slide, the BC ten fifty three. This property has been condemned, bids of demolition by the state, our CBO has. This was follow-up inspection. No changes have been made since the previous inspection, so it is my recommendation to proceed with the combination. The owner was present during my inspection and was dead at the house and should be gone down before the community.
Yeah, I spoke to, I spoke to several time with Chad on the phone. I'm sure you spoke to, I had a.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I'll be in right there. I'm gonna be with Ben tomorrow and we're gonna be going before the end of the month.
Okay, the council's good with that? Alright. We'll give you that, we'll go to Thursday deal, okay?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna come back to the next meeting, it's gonna be pulled out.
Okay. Alright, need a motion given? Thursday, motion made by Lacy. Second by Kip.
Sorry.
Jody.
Aye.
Kip. Willis. Lacy. Mike. Okay, good luck, Chad. Thank you for communicating.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're holding the bid right here. We're not gonna open it, okay?
Oh, it's your.
Good one, dude. Good one.
No, no, alright.
Alright, we're gonna wait. As we go forward.
Alright, uh, BC ten fifty four, the property has been condemned. The owner hasn't filled the simple court to repair demolish the structure, but our CBO does have an update. This was a follow-up inspection. No noticeable changes have been made since previous inspection, so it is my recommendation to proceed with the combination. The owner was present during my inspection and appears to be able to move and appear to be out on this road.
Which is the counsel?
So, so there's, uh, yeah, so they have, they have, I don't know, two days left under the order to repair demolish the structure. So we, we'd be on the, that's general.
Alright, that's fine. You agree with that? Okay. Alright, sir?
Uh, ten sixty five. Uh, this property has been condemned. The owner hasn't filled, and that's what the simple court to repair demolish the structure. And our, our CBO does have an update. This was a follow-up inspection. No changes have been made since previous inspection, so it is my recommendation to proceed with the combination. Alright, uh, ten sixty six, this property is scheduled for combination to this date. Uh, service act are made and our CBO has been updated. Ten sixty. This was a follow-up inspection. No changes have been made since previous inspection, so it is my recommendation to proceed with the combination. So, uh, as your counsel and the justice information have, uh, before you and your monitors as well as the recommendations I've served by very good to leave, uh, with reference to the council from your democracy, I would say.
Move by Lacy.
Second.
Second by Kip. Any questions? No further question, we're going on Jody.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Willis.
Aye.
Lacy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
That's it.
I mean, I will be here Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, next week.
Thursday. I want to get, get into motion Thursday.
Thursday, I'll give Thursday.
Move by Willis, second by Lacy. We're going on Jody. Aye, Kip.
Aye.
Willis. Lacy. Mike. Alright, that's it, okay, Tom?
Okay, BC ten sixty seven, this property is scheduled for combination here in this state. We have been unable to serve the property. Uh, so our CBO does have that different property, they're not going to be able to see, uh, our CBO. This is a follow-up inspection. No changes have been made since previous inspection, so it is my recommendation to proceed with the combination.
I spoke with Mr. Kip here and we'll be taking care of it after Halloween.
Right, property on, called, I couldn't understand the message he had, but I think Tracy.
Was it a make it?
He couldn't make it because of the illness he had, but he, he said by the end of the, by the end of the year or Christmas. Right after Christmas, he was carried on the door. You're the contractor? Okay.
Do you want to say fight on this schedule or?
Let's just proceed like everything.
I'll give Thursday.
Well, we just have to reschedule for, to prepare for five days of service. But we've scheduled, but it should be down.
Alright. Saying he did move the process along like we did everybody else. There's y'all, you fellas. Ladies. Alright.
Uh, BC ten sixty eight, this, this property has been condemned and bids for demolition have been issued. Uh, uh, received, but our, the property owner has been in contact with the mayor's office for demolition. There's a very big tension on the, uh, on the opening of the most bids, uh, which otherwise ends this date, our CBO has. This is a follow-up inspection. There have been some branches and shrubbery removed from the random structure. They're very good, they're managed, put a truck for itself. So it is my recommendation to proceed with the combination.
Okay, which is the counsel?
I think, I think they work in inside, but they need to work with outside. I saw they had some.
They're gonna tear it down the last time they came in.
I'm going to move forward like everybody else.
There's a motion made by Kip to move forward.
Second.
Second by Mike. There's two bids here. These, these, the, uh, DTB general contractor.
Okay, I've heard DTB has done this.
Withdraw, okay. Alright, uh, BM Construction. Demolish of structure and remove debris. Six thousand eight hundred dollars. Which is the counsel? Sure, yes, sir, it's only bid. You, you redrawed, you bid out. Move by Willis accepted a little, uh, bid for six thousand eight hundred dollars.
I second that.
Second by Kip. Any further questions? No further question, we're going on Jody. Aye, Kip.
Aye.
Willis. Lacy. Mike.
Aye.
Uh, BC ten thirty three, this property has been condemned. The owner, the owner hasn't filled the simple sixteen two thousand twenty four to repair demolish. Uh, there's no action necessary. Uh, BC ten thirty six, this property has been condemned. The owner hasn't filled the simple fifteen two thousand twenty four to repair demolish. Uh, BC ten thirty-six, this property has been condemned, the owner has until December sixteen, two thousand twenty-four to repair and demolish, no action necessary. Uh, BC ten sixty-three, this property has been condemned, the owner has until December sixteen, two thousand twenty-four to repair and demolish. Uh, BC ten sixty-four, this property has been condemned and demolished by damage, there may be some degree remaining, but the owner has until, uh, December fourth, two thousand twenty-four to remove. Our CBO does have an update.
This is a follow-up inspection, demolition cleared and cleaned, it's good to remove all the damage and damage inside.
Y'all, move forward, get bids to clean it up, we still can.
The business deadline is, I mean, December fourth, but we can move ahead and get bids, uh, clean it up. And then for some reason, it did not, it's cleaned up. Or he was sent the condemnation, the condemnation order was the, uh, or, yeah, the, the, the demolish had removed, the demolish had.
Motion made by Lacy.
Second.
Second by Willis. Any further questions? No question, we're going to Jody. Aye, Kip. Uh, Willis. Lacy. Mike.
Uh, BC ten seventy-two, this property has been condemned, the owner has until December eighteen, two thousand twenty-four to repair and demolish. Uh, BC ten seventy-one, this guy was.
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnny, go ahead.
We got a flag.
Yeah, he threw something up, it's all right.
Yeah, this, this the property right in front of the mines, I, I walked it, to get my garbage can, the guy was unloaded, lumber, said he was rebuilding it.
He keep it at last meeting, said he wants to rebuild it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
He got the paper, what has to be fixed.
Not a, not a word, he got the building inspected, made a list of what needs to be done to the house, to put it according to code, he has the list. He said he was gonna fix it. Now, he had. That's where, that's where, that was last meeting, give it to Johnny.
Okay, I, I, I guess I'm not on the condemnation, I'm not quite sure what's actually there.
Johnny basically means, he either needs to repair it, to bring it up to, up to speed, or he needs to tear it down and remove it.
Okay, he had by six seasons.
Yes, sir.
And if he's showing progress, we're gonna go through it.
He unloaded for two, two bar boards, so I guess.
All right, Mr. Johnny. We're working on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
BC ten seventy-one, this matter, uh, is scheduled for condemnation there on December sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. And finally, BC ten seventy-three, this property has been inspected and asked paid, uh, we're waiting to return of our abstract and our office, and after which we will send far more condemnation there, and this is our.
All right, thank you, Tom, any questions, Tom?
Yeah, I got it. Going back to, uh, BC ten sixty-three, brandy. I know it's not, it's not up, but it, can you at least cut the grass? Oh, you did, you cut it today?
Yeah, you did cut the grass.
Beautiful. No, not you, John. Okay, that's all, that's all I have. Until, until we, we're gonna keep moving.
You cut it today?
It must have been today, 'cause it was there yesterday.
Yeah, she was supposed to go yesterday, and then she wanted to show up today to.
Well, good, appreciate that. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, you bid, the fact of the first, the first two thousand twenty-five. UC Bank would no longer honor two signature checks for the purpose of confirming that each check has been, has two signatures. They were still cash checks with two signatures and, and our artist said, as long as our policy has not changed requiring two signatures, this will not be an issue. We have one account at UCBS Bank, which is the building fund for the DMV. Any questions? Take, according to them, they say all the bank. Sir?
No, what they're saying is that, um, they, they have, um, enough protections in place to detect fraud, that their system will never check to verify that each check has two signatures. So, it won't be flagged anymore, if it doesn't have two signatures.
All right, that will, that's good. Councilman Jeremy to address the council and the mayor, the public regarding the exchange at the eleven, eighteen, two thousand twenty-four meeting, Jeremy?
Yeah, it's been a way, you know, I mean, the last meeting, I got a little antic on, on, uh, I wanna apologize to the public, to the council, to the mayor, Ms. Lacy especially. As a born again believer, I need not be acting like that. I should be more worried about our soul than, about stupid stuff like that. Heard a call a while back, when you're arguing with someone, like, never argue with a fool, someone watching may not be able to tell the difference. I just wanna apologize to everybody for the antics and, but not for that happening again.
All right. Okay, any other business to be brought up before the council? Kip?
Uh, any update on streets on?
We, the hurricanes, correct me if I'm wrong, everything for the hurricane was being put up beside the caution lights. And, uh, over sparks on. Now, I got with, uh, the street commissioner, uh, to have him to get a survey to where those we gotta fix. I gave him located, start changing those that he's. Because with all the hurricanes, I mean, had Z, Zeta, we had Ida, and we have regular maintenance, I mean, you could have signed up on a morning, next morning comes, somebody ruled it over already, so it's just a constantly. So, we got some catching up to doing that.
I cannot act because, uh, the day I had one, uh, walk the lane on Modest Street. Somebody broke it, ran it over, after the boat parade, just wondering, you know.
We can go put it back up.
Yeah, if you want to.
Just say it to, just say it to.
Just wondering. Well, like, Charlie, what was the, like, y'all had, like, regular maintenance, just all changes y'all do on the, on the unit? Like, whenever, whatever, how many miles, five thousand, whatever y'all did? Not like, when somebody takes the unit, like, they check oil, they check this, or they jump in and go. They, they sign, you sign up on that, they sign up on that, or there's just the word? I got it. Kinda wondering on that, oh, I read.
Okay, I'd like to bring up something. I'd just like to bring up the Harbor Police working this past week, I need, have a discussion on it. Move by Jody. Second by Kip, audience once, audience twice, audience three times, all for. Gee, why is, uh, Harbor Police was covering for us this week?
Yeah, I have nobody to cover. Cause I almost got the contract, I was still doing, so, I don't know, they had to finish, or they had to finish, we was supposed to have. You have anybody to cover.
Okay, cause, uh, I know we got four, four of you on the court, I was just curious. I was asked, I was questioned by some people in the community, I was a little anxious, of course.
Yeah, I don't want, uh, there to be arrested funeral, all the police.
I don't know there was a day.
When, whatever.
Where's the, where's the Saturday?
Just, you just can, you know, I know there's some days that didn't have the one, they couldn't cover, and we didn't have nobody, nobody covering. I just, I just feel that we, we should have somebody, I mean, you got four people, I mean, I'm not running the police department, I'm speaking as a citizen, I'm speaking as, as the mayor, you know, I think the town citizen should have somebody covering, whether somebody had to make overtime, or somebody had to pay their time off, that's my opinion, gentlemen, you know? My second thing, does that white car have a radar in it? Does not? A white sits inside the road all day. But, you know, no radar, I mean, the, the council. I guess, my, my concern is, myself and the council gave you every piece of tool that the police department needs. Every unit should have a tool, all the tools they need, you know what I'm saying? People went accident, my radar detector's gonna go off no more. That's why I questioned you. Okay?
And Charlie, I kinda get where you're coming from, you know, I mean, we had an incident, break in, Dean Orlean, Saturday, from maybe your home Sunday. You know, if something like that were to happen, at least we got somebody on duty, but from where the mayor's coming from, we paid somebody, I mean, that's, y'all tax dollars, but I understand it was on the road, you know? Instead of making money, it's public money.
Just realize y'all.
Well.
Y'all, we have a hand now.
Why they not use yours?
Well, I know we got another month to go, and I just hope we get better for the people that, you know, chief, we work with the offices, to have them on, on duty to protect the community. Like I said, the council denied any equipment for your units.
I understand that. I'm able to get that used, that back roof down, the radar installed. Like, the radar, radar, it was taken out, we do it for people, we want to even begin to.
And you said you brought up radar, was the one in the broken unit calibrated or whatever done, like you said it was supposed to be done last week?
That one wasn't, because it wasn't installed. Wanna get it installed by the people. The broken unit, yes.
That's what I'm getting at.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the unit that we took the radar out of. That one could not be calibrated because.
I'm just asking, because last week, last week you said you was waiting to bring it, get fixed, to get calibrated or whatever, just taking it short.
Yes, yes.
All right, we want the audience comments? Mr. Johnny?
For the feedback, do I have to fill out another form, or can I use my existing, existing form that I have?
We don't have the ordinance yet.
You can do it, Mr. Johnny, just like your handwriting.
Just hold on to them.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm not that, no, I got it. I got them free.
Thank you, Mr. Johnny, Brian.
Yeah, we had ten seventy-three as far as the, the policies and all. Is there gonna be more continuation with this next year, or some, or more policies gonna be, to put on the list?
There's a, there's a third list, there, there was three lists, first, second, and third, you know? Or phase one, phase two, phase three, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know you mentioned, you know, that the little spot where my house was, you know, I said, hey, look, you know, you gotta get your house off of this building. I'm just going to, uh, see if, whatever, you're gonna have to be, uh, uh, the roof's gonna have a little glue on it, and.
Oh, the ones, the one you took your building off of, you mean?
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
They planned for what is word read, they found on the old carport, which has, um.
Yeah, well, I mean, uh, it's a few years now, I'm still picking cables up out of my, my yard and all, and, uh, my building's had metal roofs.
Where did they? All right, Brian, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
One other thing, uh, the, uh, I should have put that in the notes, uh, they, they redoing houses in my, in their set. They got Mr. Fairvale's house, they hear something years old, a leather put in the air.
Yeah, I saw that.
Come at the vehicles. And then they build in the house next, next to the line, and the survey building, elevations, full foot.
I don't understand that.
I don't understand that, and they messed, they tearing up my driveway.
Well, we need to put them on note as well.
I've noticed the.
I hope they build it right, elevate it.
But it's like, it's like trying to get rid of old paintings, it's hard to get done.
Y'all, I'll give you one better than that. Johnny, I'll give you one better than that. The visitor lady of the house, she's in a wheelchair, I think, for the, she's gonna stay.
But isn't it put her in elevator, or something?
Mr. Johnny, you want us to, I think you want, you want us to, uh, send an officer to make a, a report on their damage on your property, so we can.
I forgot, I'm, I'm, I've talked to several people about it.
Okay, you don't, so you don't need nothing from us?
I'm sorry?
You, do you need some, us to send an officer to make a report?
No, not yet.
Okay. All right, good. All right, is any ability to be brought up, if not, we need a motion adjourned? Move by Mike, second by Jody, all for. No moves, motion carried, meeting now adjourned, thank you all. Brian.